This is the regular city council meeting, January 23, 2019, 7:00 PM.
And everybody got sick when they came back. I don't think it was stomach stuff.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the January 23, 2019, regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Vice Mayor Brimer for a moment of silence and a pledge.
If we could have a moment of silence, please. Please remember the incident that Sebring today and the people that were shot and killed in that particular instance in your thoughts and prayers. Moment of silence. Okay, thank you. If you'll join me in the pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Move on to Agenda Item 3. We have a promotion in our fire department. I'd like to turn it over at this time. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If I could get Jeff Dangler to join us. So Jeff joined the department in 1999. When I first met Jeff, me and Jay Dragon, one of our captains, was working in Calhoun, and Jeff got in the car. It was getting back to the Inglons because we were at the Harbor City at the time. And I said, "Oh, you're Jeff Dangler. I've never met you before, but I hear you're Governor of the Department." And he had such a crappy face and so mad and upset about having to... I was just like, "Well, man, this guy's kind of a jerk." But fortunately, since 1999, and years later, I've had the ability to get to know Jeff and understand him, and I have found that as the people here that are here to support him, he's a hard worker. He's dedicated to Satellite Beach. He lives in Palm Bay, and I'll tell you more about that. But he lives in Palm Bay, but he's very, very dedicated to Satellite Beach. He's very dedicated to the community. We're very blessed and honored for the amount of work he has done to get to this point. And one of the requirements that I was the Fire Chief head to employ was, for this position was to be in broken for residency requirement. And I needed to have him move closer to the city, plus some more challenges he's had to overcome. He's accepted those challenges, and I think that says a lot for his dedication to the city. It says a lot for his dedication to the department and to the position. So I'm very honored to be swearing in at this moment. So with that, I think I'll have to make sure the city manager probably speak. Reach right hand. Repeat after me. I, Jeff Dangler...
I, Jeff Dangler.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
Constitution of the United States.
The State of Florida...
The State of Florida.
The City Code...
The City Code.
And the city ordinances of the City of Satellite Beach.
And city ordinances of the City of Satellite Beach.
That I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Deputy Fire Chief of the City of Satellite Beach.
The duties of Deputy Fire Chief of the City of Satellite Beach.
Welcome aboard. Thank you, sir.
So I just wanted to say, you know, I'm really glad to see... I like to see our internal staff move up, up the ladder, and I think you're a perfect fit for this position. And I, for one, thought, I always thought his facial expressions were just fine, and he was always nice. I just wanted to say that. But I do have kind of a funny story. When I first got to the city, we were preparing our first budget, and it changed, the format of the budget changed quite a bit, and we have pictures in it now and all kinds of stuff. So I was emailing all the department heads, you know, send me pictures so I can include into the budget. And I got a picture of, from the fire department, of a guy on the side of a building, hanging off the side of a building from a rope. And I was like, "Oh, cool, you know, what's his name?" And they send back Jeff Dangler, and I was like, "Ha, ha, ha, ha." You know, "Give me his real name."
Oh, my God, that's hilarious.
So I just always thought it was funny that we had, you know, a Dangler dangling off a building in the budget. So every time I see his name, I think of that, of that picture. But we appreciate you stepping up to the plate, and we really look forward to your, to your tenure here in your new position. So congratulations.
Thank you, good.
It's not deep enough that there's no red.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for your hard work. If all the first responders and everybody that's here, will you just please stay for a second? I'd appreciate that. With council's permission, do you mind if we move council comments up in front of citizens, and then we'll come back to it? And so we'll go to council comments. First to the police, first responders, and everyone in our community that makes us safe, I want to thank you. We got a great award yesterday as the safest city in Florida. And without the help of the police and the fire and everyone, it wouldn't be possible. Just thank you guys for incredible job and the hard work you do for us. Who would like to start? Scotty?
We always start with me.
Pressure's on.
I just have two things, and I like to tie in things related to our schools while we're up here. So if you haven't had a chance to be at the Melbourne Square Mall, make sure you check out the district art fair. There's lots of wonderful student artwork, and our city is well represented with our two elementary schools and our middle school and our high school. And also tonight is the ABC Awards, where all of the Teacher of the Year and Employee of the Years and Principal of the Year, all those are being awarded. So next time, I'll have their names, and they can recognize our city winners. So.
Thank you. Mark?
Last council meeting, guys had asked if I could kind of work on putting together a, kind of a celebration of what we've done throughout the city, and part of that would involve the Satellite Beach Fire Department, the Police Department, the Rec Department, 55-plus, and all the different things that we have done in this city over the last 15 to 20 years. So what I, what you have at the dais for your consideration with the mayor's signature is a, is a, came as a result of me meeting with Courtney and just kind of mulling around how we could put this together and just kind of celebrate all the accomplishments that we've had over the years. So the letter you have is actually kind of putting together an event called For Your Consideration Fitness for All Ages Day. The idea would be that we would have the, invite the governor, the Secretary of the Department of Elder Affairs, and the Surgeon General for the State of Florida to come down, as well as the DOH membership as well, and anybody else that we can invite locally to come to kind of celebrate this and do a ribbon cutting ceremony down at Satellite Beach Park when the exercise facility opens up. So that's kind of what we had kicked around, so it's just for you guys to talk about and see if we are on the right path for this. But it's the first of its type in Satellite, in Brevard County, and obviously, it's been spearheaded by some wonderful folks in this city with the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the Rec Department. So it kind of pulls it all together and kind of takes a opportunity to celebrate what we've done over the years. So that's what I have. I'll turn to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Courtney, consensus good enough with you on this? Counsel, consensus?
Yeah.
Mark, thank you for your hard work on it. Appreciate it.
On the 15th, I attended the Brevard delegation meeting, which is the legislators that represent Brevard County, your House Reps and your state senators. And there were some votes that were taken at the beginning of the meeting that were definitely beneficial to cities. So we, we fared well on some of that stuff. But there's still some things that are intruding into home rule, government, local, closest to the people, that some of our state legislators are still, you know, supporting. So we'll be working on that. Also, I want to thank our staff for the social media training day that we had here on the 17th. Brittany, all the city hall staff, and especially Adam, who did the AV stuff for us. We had 50 some odd people here from across the state of Florida that came for a social media class that the Florida League of Cities put on. They also covered all the expenses for it, for breakfast and lunch. But it was great to have people from across the state come to that event here in Satellite Beach. So it was great. Thank you.
I don't really want to, I don't have anything really to say other than congratulations to your promotion, and I see you there, and good luck, help keeping us safe. And again, thank you guys for the safest city award. I am not surprised, but it's still an amazing achievement, and hopefully, we can stay on the top of that list for the years to come.
Thank you very much. Any other council comments? Here, at this time, I'll go back to citizens' comments. This will be for non-agenda items. So non-agenda items, I'll take citizens who live within the boundary of Satellite Beach first, and then whoever else would like to speak. The mic's open. Here are no citizens, non-citizen?
Yes.
Please.
My name's Leo Smith, 10455 Hamilton Avenue, in Satellite Beach. Thanks, Mayor. More quickly, when I was here in Hinkinavender discussing the code in Section 30, about 6.15 on RV storage defamation, basically, I appreciate hearing that and you left with the advice that's kind of passed over to Courtney, that it sounded like a staff issue, please look into it, and that hasn't been done. Essentially, I got back the briefing that Courtney was kind of solicited from the council, and they didn't seem interested in reviewing this, the code, taking a look at this, and that was kind of the advice I got back. What I need is advice, I think it's really simple. I think we have good codes, and good codes for a reason. This involves my specific concern is my property mine, and a setback that's protected by the code. There's one exception in the code, and it's about RVs, and they make an exception, and I don't think it's worded the way we intended to, and it certainly doesn't protect that very good code that we do have. It provides a little bit of space for stormwater runoff and utility easements. So my question is, the direct line of your point is, how can I go about sitting down with someone and discuss this a little bit further and look at it, how simple I think it might be, and some of the conflicts?
My recommendation to you, as you have that, is to talk with our building department and our city manager, and she would, if they feel that it's something that is written incorrectly, or wording could be changed, or they feel the council would like to look at it, and then it will be brought back to us.
Mayor, can I?
Yeah, I think you've already discussed it.
We've done that. So that, we've already indicated that we don't support any changes to the code. We did provide a background of the issue to you all, which was a packet that kind of outlined the complaints and the responses to that, and then also the code itself, and then the last time it was approved, the minutes for that. So we gave that to you. I received from four out of five of you that you did not want to revisit that code. So I think the only, from a procedural standpoint, if there's no interest from council, there's always the application for a code change that he can file, which is a form that we have, that you can apply for that. But then that's on your, your cost at this point. And so then he could have that added to the agenda, but that's at his own risk.
Is this what you have already discussed with...
Yeah.
...our city hall and our, and our building department, or is this something totally new?
No, there's nothing.
Okay. Then, I know I've seen it, because the city manager and I have sat down and discussed it, and I think she probably talked to other people on the issue.
I just wanted to say, we didn't give a recommendation when we sent that information to you. We just gave you the facts, and I received still four out of five that, that did not want to invite, and open it up again.
Okay. Thank you.
So what you're saying is, saying get back to the city, and you're...
She told you the application, the process that you could go through, other than what we've done. Okay?
I can actually email that to you, because I think we have your email address. So if you, if you would like, we can, I can have John Stones send you the application for a code change.
That'd be terrific.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? Did we go over, no, I want to ask a question for, did we go over the history of this issue with this gentleman, so he understands the dynamics of how long all of this took to be put into place?
I'd have to ask him that question, because I, I have not been really speaking with Mr. Matt.
I think if he heard that situation, and that we had, this, when this passed, we gave people five years to comply. I mean, you were on council at the time. This was a very well-thought-out procedural matter in our city. It took years for us to get this done, and we tried to accommodate as many residents as we could. So, and that's what the intention was, for this to have been passed. And there are a lot of people that have the ability of doing what they want to do on their property based on all of that.
Sure, sure.
And I think there's a lot of people that utilize those spaces to put vehicles there. And I don't, I don't think we're going to look, I would not personally be looking at doing anything to infringe anyone from being able to utilize their property the way they're able to do right now, because it took so long for us to get to that point.
But there's also good codes in there that revert back to, you can't do certain things on your property that influence other properties, you know, the next door neighbors negatively.
Again, my recommendation is, you have the procedure now that you could file, and you can get the form from Courtney. Okay? Thank you. The mic is still open for residents on non-agenda items. At this point, open the mic for non-residents for non-agenda items.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name's Tiffany Johnson, and I am from Melbourne, Florida. Do you need my full address? Okay. I was here back in September and just kind of spoke to you guys about my concerns regarding, just some of the recent issues regarding the PFOA and the PFOS issue. And then, you know, what we were doing in a whole to kind of protect the kids, and, you know, were there any proactive measures being taken? And I noticed that the school board did roll out a resolution back in September as well. It looks like that took place on September 11. And I, too, have been, you know, kind of just trying to do my part in, you know, joining into activism in the community, trying to encourage people to start the protection in their homes and so on and so forth, because obviously, we know it's going to be a very lengthy process of cleanup. So I just had a question, because somebody who claims to be affiliated with, closely with the city, has made some pretty direct defamation of characters to me. So I was trying to go on record and find out, who is Kathy Marler to the city, and what is her affiliation to you all?
Nothing. She's a resident of the city.
She's simply just a resident of the city? Okay. Because documents have been furnished where she's speaking on your behalf, and specifically documents that are targeting me. So I just kind of wanted to get some clarification. Is she counseling on your behalf? Is she providing the citizens any type of information? Is strictly just kind of what her communication is and...
Right. The way of any other citizen has the door open at city hall, they can come, speak there, if they want to talk to us. But other than that, her opinion is nothing to do with the council.
Well, and I just find that a little bit interesting, because she CC'd on a lot of very interesting and important information. So just kind of, you know, doesn't...
Right. Well, I mean, obviously, if there is correspondence that she came in and asked for to give to us, okay, and if that is still the same trail of emails, then she would be copied as any other citizen would be. But that's not the opinion of...
Right. I personally haven't seen any email correspondences with you, mayor, whatsoever.
Well, no. What I'm saying is, it's, it's the, it's not, her information is not directed to, put out by the City of Satellite Beach.
I think these questions would be better directed to her.
Sure. I just, again, going back to her own words and public documents, I'd be happy to share this around. I didn't bring copies to everybody, but...
There's a lot of people who speak for Satellite Beach city residents. I mean, I've watched the red minutes of the City of Melbourne's meeting, where someone who doesn't live here went and spoke for City of Satellite Beach residents. So a lot of people do that, but that doesn't...
Well, no, no, no. She wasn't speaking directly in these documents on behalf of the residents. She was speaking directly on behalf of yourself and the mayor.
No, I've never...
So that's why I was just trying to get a formal, you know, addressing of what her position is to the city, because it does, you know, it, it makes me kind of feel a certain way when I'm really truly like advocating and trying to bring change to the community, and then, you know, it just, just kind of gets a little fishy.
Nothing from our end.
Just for clarification, the PFOS and PFOA resolution that the school board passed was actually written by the City of Satellite Beach, and we passed that...
No, and I, I thought that was awesome. I mean, I was literally in here the week before, and then, you know, that was written on the 11th. I mean, it was literally less than a week turnaround.
Well, that's good, because there was people that spoke against it, so I'm glad to hear that.
Right, yeah. No, it's definitely recognized. That's the common goal, you know. But for me, I just wanted to, to find out and see what her position was.
As a resident of the city.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much.
The mic's still open for non-residents?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council, city manager. My name's Dave Weber, and I live in Palm Bay. The reason I'm here tonight is to bring your attention some outstanding performance by your fire department about two weeks ago. My sister, Julie Rich, lives on Pineapple Avenue in Satellite Beach. You may know her, you may not. She was in her kitchen, cleaning her blender, glass container, dropped to the floor, shattered, and punctured her leg pretty good. The kitchen floor was covered in blood. She was slipping around. She finally got ahold of a neighbor. Neighbor came over. They called 911. Members of your fire department responded and rendered aid to her and got her transported to the hospital. Here's where the amazing, outstanding performance comes into play. They cleaned the kitchen floor and did a load of laundry of the towels that were soaked in blood. Now, I say this to you, I'm a retired Palm Bay police officer, 28 and a half years. I have never seen a fire department do that, take the time to show that they care, that the patient doesn't come home from the hospital and have to worry about cleaning up a mess. So I just want to bring to your attention the outstanding performance of your fire department. I applaud them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, as always.
I saw pictures, and that looked like quite a crime scene, you know, so thank you for...
Thank you for coming out to say that. We appreciate that.
Appreciate it very much.
You're very welcome.
Mic's still open for non-citizens. Okay? At this time, non-citizens.
Dan, well, I'm sorry. I am a citizen, but I didn't intend to speak at the beginning. I just thought of a question I wanted to throw out here. Thank you for indulging me, ladies and gentlemen. This question is directed towards the city manager. Courtney, who was terminated over public records request 460?
Nobody was terminated over that. There was multiple issues, and it's a personnel matter.
Okay.
So the city clerk.
City clerk was terminated. Thank you. Have a good night.
Mic's still open. Here are no further closed citizens' comments. We'll move on to Agenda Item 6, city attorney's report.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Move on to Agenda, excuse me, Agenda Item 7, city manager's report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let everybody know that the mayor's fitness challenge will kick off on February 2nd, and Satellite Beach will be hosting a walk beginning at the DRS Center at 10:00 AM. We'll have several vendors there for, to share opportunities to stay active in the community, and we will be giving out 50 helmets that have been donated, and representatives of the Health Department will be there to properly fit children. And if you would like to participate in that event, you can sign up for the challenge at uwbrebrevard.org. And from February 6th to 10th will be the Fifth Annual Locals Only Surf Fest at the Satellite Beach, I'm sorry, Pelican Beach Park. The Fifth Annual Locals Only Surf Fest is an event for Brevard County surfers ranging from pro, longboard ladies, and children. And new events have been added this coming year, which will be a skate contest, a 5K run, and a Battle of the Hoods surf and rocket climbing contests. And I forgot to mention, going back to the mayor's fitness challenge, we will be doing approximately three or four events for that, instead of a bunch of little classes. I think, we think we'll get much better participation this year. But part of that is going to be a scavenger hunt for the community, and so we're organizing that right now. And my husband has agreed to shape a surfboard for the final prize for that event. So we did get the number one spot for City in Florida, so I'm very proud of my staff for that. And I did want to take a moment to introduce Elizabeth, or Liz Alward, to everybody as our new Assistant City Manager. I think we've done that already, but I just wanted to put that in our report. Liz came from the county. I stole her from the county, and we're very excited to have her expertise here at the city. I will be absent from the city from February, from February 11th through the 13th for the Florida League of Cities Fast Fly to DC. During that time, I will be working with the League of Cities advocates to promote the League of Cities priorities, but also, at the same time, will be discussing our PFOS, PFO issues, trying to get some federal funds for the lagoon testing. I am working to hold a meeting with all homeowners on cinnamon court to see if we can all come to an agreement to look at, it says widen the road, but we're really looking at, you know, possible solutions to the fact that it's such a narrow road. We get a lot of complaints with people not being able to pass through because lawn maintenance companies and things like that are using the street. So we're going to meet with the community to see how, exactly how bad it is. We have gotten complaints from one particular property owner, and so we want to make sure that all the community owner, property owners on that street agree that there's a problem. So I just, if you hear that in the community, that's why we're going to be meeting with them.
Is this, like, the west side of South Patrick, just the...
Yeah, it's just the quarter court. Yeah, just the quarter.
You let us know when you meet, so we can...
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide you the letter.
Okay, great.
That we're getting ready, so now.
Thank you.
We did receive a notice from FDOT that they have agreed to put in a turn light at Cassia Boulevard for the north and southbound lanes. So the mayor won that. He's very excited. I don't think we had a meeting in the last three years with DOT, probably about 10 different meetings, where the mayor talked about that turn arrow. So he finally got it. So we're excited for him.
You've got to read the letter. It is interesting.
And then, and we might have a ribbon cutting for that, too. Just, that would be awesome. We also, we have also submitted the permits for the A1A median landscaping improvement. And so I wanted to let you know that that's moving forward, and hopefully, that will come at the same time that the flasher beacon light's going. So that, they did give us a timeline for that. I sent you that information. So that, that is going in, in the next month or so. I also received a letter from Brevard County asking for approval for aerial spraying of mosquitoes. So you could see that in your packet, and I am requesting your approval for that. So this would be an action item. I'm sorry, I should have put that on there.
Hi, Mark.
Okay.
Okay. This time, it was in the packet there for the spraying. Just to let everyone know, I did have a meeting with Courtney on this, just because I remember spraying for mosquitoes in the past, and what it did to ospreys and the environment. It wasn't very healthy, and they stopped. And I was wondering, why are they spraying again? But it's a whole different system, and Courtney explained it to me. And why don't you explain that just a...
So, and we have the, the chemical makeup sheets on our, I think it's on our webpage, but if it's not, I'll make sure it's on tomorrow. The, when we have any aerial spraying, we get a lot of calls, because people get nervous about that. They try to focus the spraying only on stormwater systems and ponds, and the reason why is because the spray is not really insecticide. It's actually a larvicide, and it's a biological bug that, that they drop in, that the larva eat and die from. So, so it's not a insecticide like the trucks are. So if you see the trucks go through, that's an insecticide. What, what's interesting is, we don't get a lot of that, of the truck spraying, because we're beachside, and a lot of the breeze sweeps away those mosquitoes. So what they try to do is stop it at the source. And they will only spray if they find, if they have like little traps, and the traps consist of a mosquito control guy putting his arm in it and... a mosquito control guy putting his arm in it and seeing how many mosquitoes land on it and they trap them. And if they test positive for the Zika virus, then they will come out and spray. But that's really the only instance that they ever do. So sometimes you won't ever see them spray. They just need the permission by statute to do that. So-
Do you need a motion?
We do need a motion so I can give them approval.
I'll make a motion to authorize Courtney to sign the letter agreeing to spray for mosquitoes.
Second?
I have a motion by councilman Montanaro, second by councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion from council?
I do want to make just one statement. When I was on the sustainability board, we actually had a presentation about this and I'm not really sure when it was, but if anyone's interested, I'm pretty sure more details were actually, because I think it was presented to try to stop the spraying from happen-
That's correct.
...happening. And after a lot of, you know, in-depth, you know, research and discussion, we felt, you know, we found out that this is definitely a better method than what has been used in the past and is safer for us. So just if anyone else is, I guess we could probably figure out when that was. It was a couple of years ago.
We could look at it. Yeah, it was a couple of years ago. It was when we started the board.
Yeah.
And I think the, you know, there's always a balance.
Right.
Because, you know, nothing's 100% chemical free. I mean, there's still, you know, the bugs are, there's still chemicals that deliver them, you know. So there's a, you know, a method to get it down. But the alternative is mosquito borne diseases. So, you know, there's, you get away those options and that's why, you know, you come up with the best solution. And so far, this has been the least-
Invasive.
Invasive, right. But it still addresses the problem.
Does the spraying, is it done like at night, in the middle of the night?
It's, yeah, it's done in the evening.
Then later, okay.
And during the day. So that doesn't really matter as much as, what matters is when they do it and that's when they, when they see a Zika virus mosquito test positive.
Are there questions? Council open up for public comment. Open up for public comment for this agenda item, for this action item, excuse me. There are no, I'm going to bring it back to council. Any further? Grace?
Councilwoman Brusicki?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Staff, Courtney, any further?
Yes, I do. I have two items that I had to add. The first is, I'm going to ask Liz to come up and talk about the solar together, FPL shared solar program. We just needed your permission this evening, so we're sorry we had to walk this on the agenda. We sent this out to you in advance. But I did get, FPL did, Bart Getchens, who's the district director, let me know that since I went to the Public Services Commission and argued against their rate increase because they didn't do solar, that this would be an opportunity to show our support for FPL because this is one of the things that the Public Service Commission asked them to do, to start investing in large scale solar initiatives. And I think some of these areas, the last one I visited had 300,000 panels. So these are the facilities that we would be investing in if we chose to do this program. So I'm going to let Liz take over from there.
So, good evening. The requested action in front of you is just to simply give the city the ability to register for this program. FPNL needs kind of a headcount of what kind of infrastructure they're going to have to build if the Public Service Commission does approve it. So simply by registering, it gives FPNL kind of a headcount of what that looks like. I did submit kind of a worksheet in here and you can see how if the PSC approves this agenda, or they request, and you're in the program, the annual bill impact, that you will see the first five years, there is a cost, to assist FPNL in building the infrastructure for the solar panels. So by year seven, eight, you will see that you're out of the negative and you'll start seeing cost savings on your FPNL bill. And by year 2030, if this chart stays the way it is, you could be seeing up to an 11,000, almost $11,600 savings per month on your electric bills. So it's a cumulative type of program. You help with the upfront costs for the infrastructure and then you start seeing your savings on the back end. And that's based on the kilowatts that you use currently. So any new structures that are built later, they will give you the ability to register if you should desire to enter into this program. A couple of things I found out today was the amount of kilowatts that they are looking to put in the grid is about 650,000. And I'm not a kilowatt expert, so I said, well, give me a visual. It's about as much kilowatts that half of the Port St. John power plant currently provides to the grid. So I call them solar farms. It's now called energy, there was a name she gave me, but they're called-
Clean Energy Centers.
Clean Energy, yeah. So it's a, it's quite an undertaking. It's 500 acres of land. They try to take land that's been timbered or destroyed, bring it back up. They're very environmentally friendly. Of course, you don't need the infrastructure. You don't need all of the folks to run the plant, the Port St. John water plant, the water alone, you know, on the environment. So anyways, they're, they're looking at this solar, this shared program. I know there's other cities, the county adopted it yesterday. Satellite Beach will be the first city to apply in Brevard County. And I'm sorry for the lateness, it's just that the registration has to be done by the 29th of January. And the only fiscal can, the only fiscal impact you will have on this agenda item is if you decide not to move forward with the program, FPNL's asking for just the month of March, which would be, instead of the full year of our payment of 1,001.47, just divide that by 12, so it's about $97. So they're asking for that month of March. So by registering, it just gets us in the game. PSC still has to approve it. We won't see this program come online until March 2020 and then we'll know what the numbers truly are. And of course, everything will come back to you all for your final approval. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions from council?
I do. I want to make sure I understand this correctly. So they're asking us to help them pay to put solar on a piece of property that we will ultimately see a decrease in our power bill as a result-
That's correct.
...over a span of time. That's what's going on here. Okay. It was a little confusing when I read it at first.
I know.
I didn't understand. Are they building it on our properties or-
Cities only?
Yeah, like this is their own property, right? So we're helping them build a plant.
So they're looking at 10 separate properties currently. They haven't identified it yet, but when they bring this to the PSC for approval, they're going to have to identify that property for their approval from the PSC. And it's over 500 acres.
The county, Brevard County has already approved theirs, 5-0. So the counties are getting on board, but we will be the first city to approve it if we move forward.
And I did look into your sustainability plan and it is one of the mandates that you have for the city for clean energy. And this does go to 2030 and you look at renewable energy by 2030. So this is a good first step in getting some of that plan adopted.
Is this for city use of electricity or citywide?
No, 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 city use, our city facilities.
Okay, so can we opt out of this at any time?
Not, well-
Okay, we're spending money on putting solar on our buildings, right? And then part of the plan was to, by X date, was to have solar on all our buildings in the city. So if we're putting solar on all our buildings in the city, then why do I need them?
This would be, this would be a way to do that without, like, for example, we spent about 153,000 to put solar on this building.
Right.
So the Schecter Center would be about twice that.
Right.
So I don't see us doing that for a long time. This would allow us to invest in that same amount of energy and get the same savings over time, but without the upfront cost of ourselves, on ourselves. Do you see what I'm saying? So it's another alternative way to do that.
I don't know. I'm having a hard time with that math, just because I haven't had a chance to really look at this.
So you're not, you're not opting into any of this?
Yeah.
The only thing that's, we're locking us into today would be-
The council.
...the registration and that this still all needs to be approved by the PSC. And the registration is just to give FPNL the understanding of how many cities and counties, how many kilowatts are they going to need, how big of a piece of land. So-
So if we decide against it later, you pay $97?
Yeah.
So this one piece of property is just going to be for the people that opt into this? They're the only ones that are going to be getting the power benefit of this?
Right, because all the energy will go into the grid and then that's how they give you the savings from-
Right. So they're, what they're trying to do is, they're trying to construct these massive, you know, solar, solar fields. And to be able to help with the upfront costs, they're giving us the opportunity to invest in those solar fields with a return on our electric bills.
So let me ask you this, okay? Because I understand where Frank is coming from. This is $1,147. Is that for the year of 2019?
20, it'll be 2020.
2020. So then that figure will stay the same or somewhere in that vicinity for the next six years?
Well, you can see, if you look at this chart with the annual poll, and then if you look under the annual bill impact, year two is 722, year three is 393.
Yeah, so it goes down.
It goes down. And then, and then you see it comes out of the negative in year five and year five you see a savings of 377. So whatever your bill normally built that year, you would see a 377. And if you go across, you can see how that increases over time. And till you get to year 2030, which would be a savings of 11,646.
Where's the break even point? How many years?
The break even is, um, three years. I did the math. Year five, six, and seven get you break even. Year eight gets you to where your savings is.
You know, these, all you have to do is drive down 95.
That's the break even of a regular solar panel-
That's true.
...project. So when you do, when we did solar here, the cost of the solar, we break, we win after eight years.
Right. Understand that. You know, if you drive down 95, when you get into Indian River County, there is a huge facility being built right now that FPNL is building. It's right there off the road. I think this is probably something that is going to be coming on a more regular basis across the state of Florida. This is just us getting in on the ground floor on something that, long term, coupled with the solar that we have and offsetting some of the costs, because it could be years before we're totally off the grid, if we ever even get there. But this is another way of us utilizing solar as a group with other people in FPNL. And I think it's a pretty good idea.
So are we also investing in solar for the rest of their customers? So I guess my question is if everybody puts into these panels, are these panels going to provide power for, other than the people that are put into, I guess, so it's basically you're helping to, so we are doing-
They're offsetting their costs for the fuel that they put in to the power plants that are either the oil fired or the coal fired. This is just an alternate solar supply of electric.
No, I get that. I guess my question is, is-
But we're paying for their-
Helping them pay for their-
Their grid.
Their grid that they're going to be profiting off of.
And if you're a homeowner.
Ultimately from other people, which I'm not totally opposed to, but I guess it's like crowdfunding so they can-
The amount of money you pay upfront is based on your kilowatt usage. So for instance, the county's first year cost, because their electric bill is much higher, they're at 78,300. So that would be their annually, their first annual impact, where our, based on our kilowatt, would be 1,147. So you're actually, the larger your organization, the more kilowatts you use, the more investment you're making for that.
Yeah, I get all that. I guess my question is just that we're investing into their infrastructure that they're going to use for other things other than just us, which I'm, again, kind of okay with. But the other side of it is, so if we're helping them build this financially, are they ever going to turn around and return another cost onto the customers as well? So are they going to come at it from both sides? If we're helping them by investing in and building these panels or this thing, and then are they going to turn around and say, well, we had to build all these panels down the road and so now the individual customers are going to have to come back and pay? Does this make sense what I'm trying to say?
I don't really see it that way. Like, we're not investing in their profits. We're investing in our credits. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, we're investing for us not to have an electric bill later.
Right.
And in doing that, we get them, we motivate them to switch to solar. Do you see what I'm saying?
So part of the approval from the Public Service Commission does wash the rates in.
Right.
So you're not going to see what you just described. And that's why it's going through the PSC as approved on the program.
How does the resident benefit from this? Because we're spending their money on this and if they already have solar.
This, this isn't for residents. This is for the city.
Okay, but what I'm saying- The resident benefits because our, our power bill goes down eventually, right? But you, you said that this is going into the grid, to the general grid.
Based on the kilowatts that the city uses for their facilities.
Ultimately, our power bill goes down, which means that-
Right. Very similar to, it would-
We're not paying FPNL, we're paying them.
If we were putting solar on our building. But instead, we're saying, okay, instead of putting on our roof, we're going to, we're going to put the money into the, into the grid. So that's just the difference. But it's a lot cheaper this way than it would be if we put solar panels on our roof.
And I can, I can send you, I looked online today, there are a number of different programs similar to this, that they already have gotten approved by the PSC for residential. A residential person can actually, enough with this program, but there's others out there.
They're starting the solar panel leasing programs and things like that. And this is all coming out of where prior to, I think it was three years ago, they had their PSC meetings where they were asking for their rate increases and what they were doing was moving the commercial rates, they're reducing that and then drastically increasing the commercial, or the residential rates. And they got a lot of criticisms for that. But when we went to the PSC meeting, we were the only city there that spoke against the rate increase. Every other city that was there actually spoke in favor of it. So, but our, the way I spoke was, the reasoning was, you know, unless you're going to do something that reduces, you know, the residents' costs over time and invest in clean energy, then I don't see how the city of Satellite Beach could support a rate increase for our residents. And so I obviously wasn't the only person that was demanding solar from the community, but that was some of the comments that they received. And the PSC turned around and said, okay, well, if you want these rate increases, you're going to have to change your sourcing.
Delivery.
And, yeah. And so they, they gave them basically mandates that they had to meet. But already FPL has significantly exceeded those and has, I guess, because they feel that the market has changed in solar so much that they feel that it's now achievable and feasible to switch.
Someone, I think, I think you just answered it, Courtney, but I'm going to put this to Jim. Jim, are we, are we, is this basically a lease that we're entering into or is it an option that we, how, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get the legal around it. What, what is it that, go ahead. Yeah, I think you know my question.
I don't know what the quote unquote agreement is because we're not going to know that until next year, I guess. But conceptually, what it sounds like is that FPNL wants to know how many people are, let me rephrase that, how many governmental or I guess quasi-governmental entities are interested in the program. They'll make a determination about what the estimated kilowatt hours will be needed to provide the solar farm or whatever you want to call it, which will dictate the size of the property that they need.
Okay.
And then however the financial stuff works, that's how it's going to work. And when you say the power goes into the grid, which is what Frank sounds like he's concerned about, the point is, is the power is going to, again, I'm conceptualizing this. I don't know if it's true or not, but it sounds like what they're going to do is, at, just as it goes into the grid now and the city consumes it, it will be generated from a different source that will go into the grid and will still have the same number of kilowatt hours that we're going to use. It's just that it's going to come from this as opposed to over here. The issue about a lot of stuff, which is, I guess, in part to semi-answer a couple of the questions, is that the concern was, is that we're quote unquote helping build their infrastructure. The fact of the matter is, we do that now. I mean, when they expand, like their Turkey Lake nuclear plant or have to make repairs, they do, they go to the PSC and ask for rate increases to do that. So their tariff allows them, whatever the PSC does with their tariff, they're allowed to tack those onto the bill. Or the energy surcharges that they had back in the day when the- Or the energy surcharges that they had back in the day when the gas prices went way up or spiked really high rapidly, they were able to go to the PSC and get that as an add-on to the bill. So, I mean, historically, FPNL and all the power companies go to the PSC to ask the consumers to help address their facility concerns. So I'm guessing, again, I don't know this, because I haven't been involved in it, but I'm guessing that's what they're doing with this tariff, is PSC's basically telling them they have to do X, Y, and Z, and this is how they're gonna go about it. And they do ask the PSC to have their customers help them address their infrastructure and facility needs. But again, I don't know exactly how that's playing out on this.
Okay.
I just think at this point, if it's not gonna cost us anything at this point, I mean, I'm totally okay with registering for it, because we're not committing to anything right now. So, I mean, it's just, it's confusing for me to understand exactly what it is they're trying to do.
No, no, I agree with only, and because of the registration deadline, so I'm fine with this.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm fine with that, I say. I'd like to make a motion. Do we need to do a motion for this, or...
Yes, guys?
Oh, do you have more you need to...
Well, guys, we have questions, but you can make the motion, and we'll keep the... Because I've gotta, for public comment.
So, I'd like to make a motion for, to authorize the city manager to begin the registration process for Solar Together, an FPL-shared solar program, and also allow the city manager to be authorized to sign the agreement with Solar Together. The registration deadline is January twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Gibson, second by Councilman Montanaro. At this time, to council for more comments.
I had a question. If we do this, are you then anticipating not putting solar panels on our own buildings? We would do this instead?
Well, I think you have...
Or in addition to?
I think we have, those are questions we need to ask FPL when we get into the agreement portion of it, because obviously, we're gonna, you know, cities grow and counties grow, and, you know, what do you do when you get a new building, or subtract a building, you know? So we have opportunities, particularly when we're building the Public Works Building and the Fire Station, to put solar on that. But when you're looking at a building the size of the Schecter Center, I just don't see the city ever affording that. And so this is the opportunity to be able to meet our goals. So I think we'll figure that out when we get into the agreement process. I think there's gonna have to be a way of adding and subtracting buildings as time goes on. So it won't prevent us from putting solar on our buildings, and we'll make sure that that is the case before we sign any agreement or bring that agreement.
I just meant, like, we're not paying double, we're not paying them for solar, and then we're also paying ourselves to have it on solar.
It's based on our kilowatts used, so I guess, you know, if you're reducing your kilowatt usage, then that would reduce your payments. So we'll have to make sure that that's...
And that's an option. You can always increase your kilowatt hours if you add infrastructure, and you can always reduce, and it's in that plan, if you were to do the solar and lessen your kilowatts. So that's already aimed within the PSC.
Our agreement with them, when is that agreement going to... It's gonna come back to council for us to vote on and see it?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Now, if we don't, at that time, if we don't think that this is good, then what is our out cost?
Ninety-seven dollars.
You agree with that?
I don't know.
Okay.
I haven't seen the agreement, so...
Well, there's no agreement.
Or whatever the proposal is.
If we get this agreement back, and these questions aren't, you know, answered to our, some of our likings, for ninety-seven dollars, I'll take a shot at it, but I wanna see the agreement back here and to vote on it, because I'm skeptical in a little bit of way of building somebody else's infrastructure up, and especially to residents who are engaged right now in putting in their own solar.
But it would have no impact on residents' solar installation at all.
This only has to do with...
Only has to do with city buildings.
For the entities, the governmental...
Only the City of Satellite Beach facilities.
Our city power bill.
Our municipal power bill.
You know, the reality is, we could put solar on the majority of the stuff we have, but we're always going to have a bill. Because you have ballparks that we light, you're not gonna be able to light those ballparks with solar, because we have no battery backup. You have facilities that we will never be able to have solar on, so, I mean, this is a way that we can put solar on, what we can afford to put solar on, but at the same time, this is gonna be energy savings down the road that we're ultimately not gonna have to pay, because we're getting in on the ground floor on what this solar park, for a better word. I mean, is that the way I'm understanding it?
I think technology is gonna catch up, and lights on ballfields and all that will absolutely be lit by solar, and there will be batteries to do it, because that's where all the technology is driving at this time. So for ninety-seven dollars, I'm willing to see the agreement, but I want, you know, more time to look at these numbers and really see if it's worth it, because I just, I'm not a fan of building other people's infrastructures without really seeing where it goes. That's my comment. So, any questions for, open up for public comment? This time, open up for public comment on this item. John?
John Ferguson, one thirty-five, Maple. Excuse me if I ramble a bit. I found out about this yesterday. My internet went down, so I couldn't let Courtney know till this morning. She said, "Oh, we're gonna talk about it." Well, I haven't seen the paperwork. The article that I read said that they don't know the details yet. It all depends on how it works with the PSC, okay, all that negotiation. And as one individual was quoted, "The devil is in the details." That's what you guys are discussing. You won't know those details until after the meeting and the approval. However, it seems there's confusion about what's going on here. FPL, I believe, for some years, has been the process of, I believe, expanding, or planning to expand, a nuclear plant. Each one of us is paying every month in our bill to build that plant that isn't built yet, okay? We don't have a choice. We're a customer, we pay it, because the regulator said that was okay. In this case, they're giving government entities an opportunity to opt in or opt out. Anybody can put solar on their roof, you just go hire a contractor and have it done, get your permits and all. For standard house, that costs something in the order of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, cash upfront. That's no different than here, except instead of paying thousands of dollars, what it would cost upfront, they're charging you on an annual basis, and it catches up. So there's a lot of details here. It sounds like a good idea. If the city couldn't afford ninety-seven dollars, I would give them the cash tomorrow. The opportunities here, I had initially emailed Nick, courtesy Courtney, that's how she found out, asking him to contact FPL, I didn't know this was going on, and get some information, and try to get somebody to come here from FPL and talk to the Sustainability Board. Now, it sounds to me like maybe it would be a joint meeting with you guys, too, because I think you've got interesting questions. When that should be timed, I don't know. You probably want a little more details than they could give you now, but I'm not sure. And there's one other detail I want to cover, I'm trying to think what it is. Yes, the article mentioned, and that's caught me by surprise with governments, because what the article mentioned was commercial and residential. That's coming down the road. So it would be good for the city, as an organization, to look into it, to get an idea, because somebody that can't afford to put twenty thousand dollars' worth of hardware on their roof to save money eight or nine years down the road, FPL may have a way they can do it for only six or seven dollars a month, which is the numbers that were mentioned in the article, as I recall. And so I think what we're seeing here is the beginning of a change in the business model that the utilities are operating under, which is badly needed, especially after their imbroglio with Amendment One. They've seen the light, as it were. And so I'd strongly suggest that you guys get involved, keep as front, as close to them as you can, and find out what it's really worth. And then we'll go from there.
Thank you. Mic still open?
David Chakravarti, six thirty-five, Civil Court. I guess FPL and I have been at odds over a number of years. We tried to underline some of our cables on the O N A, and they fought us every single day about why they didn't wanna do that. And though we wanted to do it, we came up to the point, we had to cash one point, and everything fell out of the markets and everything, so we didn't, we weren't able to do that. And I looked at my bill, and they said, "Do you wanna donate money to solar?" Well, I don't know if solar, but they oughta be doing that job, just like they said, everybody pays for the infrastructure. So that's why I didn't, I never gave them a donation. There was a job they needed to be doing. And if everybody can be a part of it, I understand that. I just don't, I'd say, I don't trust them, but I'd really like to see more details. If it was a minor, ninety-seven dollars, okay, yes, let's find out what it's about. I just, I hate to say this, but I just don't trust them. The PSC, the Public Service Commission, right? They're in charge of that stuff, and we just gotta follow it. Just, we have a choice here. If it's an opportunity to be a part, get involved, just do it. But watch them like a hawk, that's the only thing I can say. Because, like I say, we fought them, they tried to get us to, as individuals, to donate to it, and that's nice, if you wanna do that, but we all wanna be a part of that process. They oughta be doing that. And hopefully, they'll be doing that, and this will be immoral, so, go ahead, but just watch them like a hawk.
Mic still open? There are no further comments, I'll bring it back to council. One thing I see here, the cities can always unsubscribe from the program and have the opportunity to reduce the subscription amount following the first billing cycle.
And that's March, so the February, actually. So what they're saying is, you would pay February's bill at the ninety-seven dollars, and then come March, you have the opportunity to unsubscribe, no further obligation, lower the cost, increase the cost. Because we won't know what those numbers are until after the PSC, you know, makes some determination. So based on, we can't really base it on this, it's just their assumptions at this point. And they're right, the detail's not here, because we don't have it yet.
But when, if they're gonna start charging us this February...
February twenty-twenty.
February twenty-twenty.
Okay, all right.
It's gonna take six months.
When do we expect, six months to get it?
Six months for the PSC to confirm the program, and then we'll know, the folks that have registered, will know what those costs are, so we can bring it back to our boards, and...
We'll have hard numbers.
You'll have hard numbers. And then also, that gives FPNL the opportunity to actually construct a solar plant.
So for ninety-seven dollars...
It's kinda like a registration fee, if you wanna look at it.
Yeah, and then we're gonna get it back, and at that point, we have to make the hard decision. Please, okay? Any further comments?
I just have one more thing. But I also see this as a little bit, and I wanna get more details, but I'm all for clean energy, and I'm all for supporting that, absolutely, for the environment. But another thing that I see by FPL doing this, and I think there's something a little bit sneakier going on here, is, you know, they're losing business to solar companies, and these are small privately-owned, small businesses, local businesses, that are building these and putting these on people's. So this is something that we would have ultimately have gone to a local business and had the panels put on. So that's business that they're gonna lose if we ultimately don't do this, which I'm not saying, look, we saved the money, but what I do see is what FPL is trying to wedge back into a market that where they're losing because of solar and individual, and then they're gonna come in and try... I mean, it's a business plan, it's a model, and I get it, but I also see that that is an option, too. So we always wanna consider that we, I am a big supporter of small business, and, you know, living the American dream, and providing for your family without working for the big man, you know? So I also don't wanna undermine anyone else's livelihood, either, so that's just something that I think we should consider as well.
The solar providers, I don't know who they're using, but I know that they source their sources very similar to what other, you know, companies here use. But also, I just wanna remind council that there's never gonna be a time where we don't need the grid.
Right.
We don't, there's not, there's houses that are too shady, that won't be able to put solar panels on. There's, you know, there's instances all throughout Florida that requires us to have a grid. So what FPL is doing is saying, you know, when you have solar drop off off their needs, they still have to maintain all those lines.
Yeah.
And now they have less people doing that. So that's where part of their effort is to protect that grid, and that's by investing in solar to change the energy sources to solar, so they can protect that grid.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments? Grace?
Hossamalum Raziki?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Hossamalum Montanaro?
Yes.
Hossamalum Gibson?
Yes.
You're a Latino.
Yes, I'll take the change for ninety-seven dollars.
Ninety-seven dollars, okay. Then I just have one more thing.
All right.
I would like to move Dr. Listopad's presentation up, if you don't mind, so she was gonna present under the letter that I have back here, but I'd like to move her up, and we're gonna record this presentation, if you don't mind. These are the presentations regarding the city's groundwater results, testing results. We'll be recording this presentation, and we'll be putting it on Facebook for the community, and then later on, I'll be asking you to approve a direct letter to the residents.
Okay. Council permission, we'll go to item eleven. Before we do, let's take a five-minute break, we've been asked, okay? We sit us for five minutes. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eleven, discuss Take Action on Sending a Letter to All Residents Summarizing the Groundwater Testing Results, plus, we're having a presentation on that result at this time.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me here. My name is Claudia Listopad. I'm the president of Applied Ecology, and we were very happy to be involved with this testing. We have also worked with the county, so we'll actually be sharing results, I'll actually be sharing results that look not only at your specific testing, but a little bit also on the county testing, since it was just performed really side-by-side. See if I can get... Okay, so I start with the questions, why we did this. This all started, the whole concerns with the PFAS really started becoming known to the public more in two thousand sixteen. Now, we have had this PFAS, and we'll talk a little bit about what those components are, for a long time in our environment. But it was only in two thousand sixteen that EPA reduced their lifetime drinking health advisory, which we'll call HOW. You've seen that in the reports all the time, there's lots of acronyms, and I'll try to show some of those most common ones, for drinking water from four hundred to seventy parts per trillion. So when that happened, that reduction in what a good number was, that triggered a lot of testing. And the first testing that EPA requested the Department of Defense to do was all across the country in the military bases. And the main reason the military bases were the first line of testing was because we knew they were using A triple-F firefighting foam, which had these PFAS contaminants in it. So this is what triggered a lot of this concern. In summer two thousand eighteen is when these results came up, and what it showed is, in the local Air Force Base, the Cape Canaveral Patrick Air Force Base, in Cape Canaveral Air Force Station, we had very high numbers for PFAS. So those are some of the numbers there in the presentation. Patrick Air Force Base, we had up to four-point-three million parts per trillion, so many orders of a magnitude higher than what was now the drinking water standard. And Cape Canaveral Air Force Station, fifty-three thousand parts per trillion. So obviously, this immediately raised a flag, the public was very concerned. So it was unknown if PFAS was moving from the bases to the adjacent communities, obviously Satellite Beach, Cove... Obviously, Satellite Beach, Cocoa Beach were some of the communities were first very concerned with this. And this has led, and also to the In River Lagoon, because these two bases are right on the banana. So this led to the concern from the county as well, not only the adjacent cities, the countywide residents be concerned wanting countywide testing. So one thing I want to mention, all this health advisory numbers, you know, the drinking water standards, is for drinking water. And all the areas we're testing in the city of Satellite Beach, the irrigation water does not, is not being used, the groundwater, shallow groundwater is not being used for drinking water in any way. So we are using a very conservative standard to compare against irrigation and groundwater that's not for that consumption. So I want to point that out. So in addition to testing for PFAS, we also looked in the city of Satellite Beach testing at several other, a whole slew of other contaminants, which are called priority pollutants. And this was actually derived from a different concern. This was a concern from the historical dumping prior to the use in South Patrick Shores, the residential development of South Patrick Shores. So very different. So I divided that into what we tested, what did we sample for. So PFAS is a whole slew, over 6,000 different chemicals. We have tests for about 24 of them in our days. And PFAS and PFAS that everyone's talking about are two of those 24 that we tested for. We did test for all the Department of Defense methods. And there's a variety of sources for PFAS. You've probably heard about this, from food wrappers to some drinking water, plastic bottles. Used to have carpet that we still use, you know, different clothing items. So they're very strict standards for collecting this data because of all these other sources we're trying to eliminate when we're testing for this. The priority pollutants we tested for included all the EPA-approved priority pollutants. And we added additional things, as of course from the city. We added some herbicides. We added perchlorate and radionuclides, which are in addition to the typical EPA priority pollutants. So where we sampled, there were three shallow groundwater monitoring wells the city had previously installed specifically for monitoring PFAS. So we re-sampled those locations. I'll show you what those are at. One of City Hall, right here, Jackson Avenue Sea Park. There was one surface water irrigation well. So Satellite Beach Sports Park is actually fed by the surface water. So it actually takes water from it and uses for irrigation. It's not really groundwater, so I wanted to point that out. And we also tested the irrigation water coming from it, but the source is really a surface water body. And then we had four other irrigation wells. And we suspect all those were deep irrigation wells. And that's the other important point that the public should know is that the majority of the irrigation wells on the beachside are really deep wells, not shallow. There are a few shallow, typically pretty old wells, but those are very saline, and they're not very good for irrigation. And that's why we typically have irrigation wells that are, you know, 75, 125 feet. A shallow irrigation well would be typically less than 25 feet. So that gives you an idea. And that's very important for the results, and you'll see that. In addition, we also tested the beach access shower, and that is actually fed by a shallow groundwater well at Grand Avenue. So this is a map, a little hard to see from this far away. But the blue dots in here are the groundwater, the monitoring groundwater wells that were installed for, previously for the PFAS. And the green is all the other irrigation wells we monitored. So that's just the details of sampling locations, so everyone can see where those are at. So, you know, if the well depth is really important to interpret the result, if it's shallow or deep, makes a huge difference. So in comparison to your results, I wanted to put a little bit of where the county sampled as well. So in yellow is the city of Satellite Beach sampling. See if I can point that out, right here. And all around the county, we also sampled. We sampled 49 other samples for the countywide study at the same time, including other groundwater wells nearby, some control wells in Melbourne Beach, control wells all over the mainland from Titusville. One control well in Titusville, but other wells, residential wells in Titusville, Suntree Vieira, Turkey Creek. So we had quite a diversity. We wanted to see, are the numbers of PFAS we are looking, that we're finding on the beachside, are they similar everywhere else? Or are we seeing a higher number here because we're close to a Patrick Air Force Base, a Cape Canaveral Air Force Station? We also sampled, there were concerns with the dredging. So we sampled the Grand Canal, not only the water in the Grand Canal, but also sediment, muck in this case, when we looked at those numbers. And we decided, well, we should also sample the lagoon water because we're all talking about the concerns of lagoons. So we had samples in the lagoon, just a few samples in the banana. And also, so that's what the blue points that are spread in the middle of the lagoon, with a banana in the north and one in the central. So results for PFAS, I separated this as for PFAS and priority pollutants because they're very different. For your results, this is zoomed in, you can't see all these numbers. But the important part is that we had detectable concentrations only at the three monitoring wells and one of the irrigation wells. All these wells where we had even detectable levels, which means they were just barely above laboratory detection limit, were shallow. So it was your groundwater wells, just as we suspected. None of your deep wells had anything. So irrigation wells that come from deep sources really are not getting affected by the PFAS. You have a confining layer, so that was actually anticipated. None of the levels we monitored were above the 70 parts per trillion. So that explains, it was, we were all below that. I believe the highest number was around, PFOWA plus PFAS together was around 40 parts per trillion, and all the other ones, numbers were below. And obviously, none of these are used for drinking water. Comparing those where there's also irrigation, provisional irrigation levels, screening levels, that have not been approved yet, there are several orders of magnitude higher. So you're way, way below those. So I didn't even bother comparing for your purposes. That is going the wrong way. Okay. So these are some of the values. You can't really read, but none of these, if a cell is highlighted in blue would be above some kind of regulatory level. You can see there's really no cells with numbers highlighted in blue here. They're all just above detection levels. And these are side-by-side comparisons, your results with the county results. The Brevard County had different results from yours. While you didn't have any of your numbers above the 70 parts per trillion, the county did have a few numbers. And, you know, I'm not going to go into detail because we had a lot of samples. But the summary of it is we had one groundwater monitoring well with numbers as high, just below 500 parts per trillion. And it was in the mainland, Palm Bay. So that was unexpected. We had two irrigation, one was irrigation, one was a pushpoint, is similar shallow wells with also above that, about 100 parts per trillion, around there. And then we also had three of the surface water samples we did in lagoon above the level. So that was also unexpected, in my view. And so that shows you some of the hits. It just shows the groundwater, we had a lot of wells. And we had, you know, both PFOWA and PFAS way above the screening levels for this particular well in Palm Bay. And these are the Brevard County irrigation wells that also had, it was 100 parts per trillion here. This was in the South Patrick Shores area. So the two Brevard County-wide study irrigation wells had, that had above the 70, one was in South Patrick, and the other one was Cocoa Beach, Snug Harbor area. Hope that helps the finding it. So summarizing the priority pollutant results. So here, we tested a whole slew of them. I'm not going to go through the list, I'm just showing, pointing at what we looked at. One thing I want to point out, Brevard County also did priority pollutant testing. And they only did this in the South Patrick Shores area, so, right here. So really, your priority pollutant testing was done very close in proximity. They focused really on the area of concern. South Patrick Shores is the area of the historical dump site, so they wanted to pick that location. So we did as close as possible with different, yeah. It's difficult, difficult to, you know, get exactly, people to allow you to test in that area sometimes. But we did have shallow groundwater, shallow irrigation wells from South Patrick Shores. We tested three for priority pollutants, and that was the county. In the case, your case, we tested your groundwater shallow monitoring wells for the priority pollutants. And the reason we wanted to do this shallow is where typically we see most likelihood of seeing this pollutants come in, seep for, will be in your shallow. All your irrigation wells were pretty much too well. So we didn't want to spend a lot of money testing. These are very expensive lists of chemicals to test. So none, they fit in categories. So semi-volatile results, we have about almost 100 of them. None of them was detectable in your results. So we saw none of these chemicals. The county results, we had one hit, triachloroethylene at one site. That was the only thing we had. It was below groundwater cleanup standards, so it was a low number. But we did identify it, this was in the South Patrick Shores, so not your data.
Where, where in South Patrick? Yeah.
We don't have.
The general area.
Yeah, we can only give you the general area. So we can't really, oh, you can't see exactly where. So the whole neighborhood, we pretty much had tested that around in that neighborhood, the South Patrick Shores. It goes from ocean, I believe, to, so we don't have the exact person being pointed out for protection.
Did you provide those individuals with the report? So do they have them available?
The individuals don't know, they're blind. So they only know three people were tested, you are one of these three. So that's the only way we can protect people's. But yes, so only one had, this value there was very, way below the groundwater cleanup target level. So we wouldn't trigger like a site-specific investigation or anything like that. It's way below what would trigger cleanup, basically. It was just a detection. We detected something. Pesticides and herbicides, nothing detected. The only thing detected, nothing detected for the city of Satellite Beach. For the county, the only thing that was detected was dildrin. It was detected at one site above groundwater cleanup target levels. We explained that in the county report. That is pretty typical. That's, used to be used for termite treatment all the time. Each site was commonly used. So we are actually surprised not to have seen more of it, actually. Perchlorate and PCBs, nothing detected, that's a good thing. Also, we didn't do perchlorate for the county, they weren't concerned with it. No PCBs were detected in any of the county samples. Cyanide, we had some detectable concentrations way below any groundwater or target health levels for your city. They were just barely, you know, below the practical quantitation limits. So basically, the laboratory can't even tell you exactly how accurate they are, but there's something there. So nothing really that raised much flags. We did find several metals that we expected to. Six of the 13 metals we tested for were found. A lot of them in one particular site, SB1. And they're all, you know, below any kind of cleanup standard. So again, nothing that raised huge concerns. No cyanide detected for the countywide results. And again, we detected metals for the county studies. There was only one metal, actually was strontium. The county tested for strontium, the non-radiactive part to the metal. And there was strontium detected in the county studies just above the groundwater target levels. But that's really typical in Florida to use part of the geology. So again, that didn't raise, wasn't that unusual. Radiochemistry, so that's, you know, radionuclides, what would scare a lot of people to hear. So everything, there were detectable concentrations of three radionuclides in three of the wells in the county. All of them were below any groundwater cleanup levels. They were just barely above detection levels. And strontium-90, we actually didn't detect any at all in your samples. Similar results for the radiochemistry, actually countywide, the numbers were very similar. Nothing for strontium-90, and some alpha and beta, numbers way below the groundwater. So conclusions, you know, you basically had no concentration, city of Satellite Beach had no concentration of PFAS, PFOWA plus PFAS, above lifetime drinking, water health advisory, so, which is much stricter than any of the proposed irrigation screening levels. The drinking water, again, a reminder that drinking water in the city is not from your groundwater. It comes from the city of Melbourne, which has multiple sources. None of them groundwater from adjacent to any of the bases. The detectable PFAS were only found, if we had detects at all, were found in shallow groundwater wells, which is not typically how most residents are using their irrigation. They have deep irrigation wells. And, you know, pretty much all the priority pollutants, herbicides, pesticides, everything we tested was in a slew of 200-plus chemicals that were tested in your free groundwater wells, where either non-detects are way below the groundwater target levels for cleanup. So overall, there was nothing that really raised huge flags of concern. And hopefully, that makes residents less concerned about any contamination they might have near their homes.
Thank you very, very much. Questions from counsel, first?
Couple.
Okay.
So you said, at one point, you said that in Melbourne, that they tested high for the PFOS or the PFOWA, like in the 400, 500s? Or did you mean that that was Cocoa Beach?
That was actually a groundwater well, surprisingly, in Turkey Creek.
It was in Turkey Creek?
Right.
Okay, I was curious. So that's south, way far south.
Way south, yeah. And actually, one of our communities in the Palm Bay area, really around the Turkey Creek basin, in the Turkey Creek basin. So that was unexpected.
Any theories on why or how it would have occurred?
No. So like I said, there's a lot of potential sources of concern. I would like to talk with the residents and see if there's something being done in the yard that's unusual or in the garage. If someone maybe works on mechanical, it might have some, you know, like you can, any lubricants typically have, O-rings typically have PFAS. So maybe if they do heavy boating work, mechanic, yeah. Could have contaminated in the yard, could have been done just the day before. There's some, even other herbicides, et cetera, chemicals people put in their lawns that might also bring some of these PFAS. So this is why there's so many sources, and it was a number that was unusual. Particularly since we tested two other locations in the same neighborhood, and they did not show levels like that. They were below. So I wasn't as concerned. If I saw the whole neighborhood with levels that high, I would have to say, ooh, there might be a source coming. But since it was one, I suspect it's local, site-specific source.
And I have a quick question for you. Have you guys done any testing anywhere else in the state that might not have necessarily, for the PFAS and that type of stuff, that wouldn't have been close to like a large contamination site, like the base, for example? Because I just, I just want to get a better idea of like.
There's more and more testing we have. There's been more and more testing happening. Typically, the testing has been always triggered near military bases. And particularly when people are using shallow groundwater for drinking water. And so there's been quite a lot of new studies coming up and concern. And so where, even with the military bases, where the money has been allocated is typically where there's drinking water, that there's, you know, it's a source of drinking water. What's contaminated is actually the source of drinking water. And obviously, that's where the money's going first, which makes sense because it's a priority.
One last question, I'm sorry, I don't want to come. You said that you tested the lagoon water, and I must have kind of missed that. So that all came back?
It did. So, see if I can push it back and see if I can read the numbers because those are kind of hard to read. And that was in the big map.
Because this has been kind of an area of concern for us, obviously.
I was, I have to say, very, no. Oh, I'm going the wrong way. Yeah, so I was really surprised that three of the lagoon water testing that we did were above the 70 parts per trillion. And they actually were very similar. And I think one of them was in Merritt Castaway was one of them. That's the central, so near the Turkey Creek area. One was the Merritt Island area. And the other one was just off the Suntree Vieira area, if that gives you an idea. And there were surface water grabs, half a meter, no surface water grabs.
So these were surface water grabs, the, because this has.
So lagoon water.
For Suntree?
We also have wells.
Okay.
But we also have shallow.
Right. And those wells, there's one I see for Suntree and one for Titusville that are equal to or exceed our results in here in Satellite Beach.
Right. So your results are really, for your groundwater wells, are the typical we have seen for developed. Where we see really low numbers or non-detects in shallow groundwater wells was really our control areas. And our control areas are the enchanted forest, undeveloped areas. So humans have an impact and bring PFAS with them. So humans have an impact and bring PFOS with them. That is definitely what you can say from this study, that your numbers are not very different than the numbers we've seen.
We don't really need a Patrick Air Force Base or an airport or something like that to drive up those numbers, it can be just daily use of PFOS.
That's what it seems, this result seems to say. They're not, we typically don't see studies that just, best countywide, every subdivision, for no reason. Typically, there's suspicions that there's something there, but this is, that was exactly the reason why we wanted to test neighborhoods all up and down, kind of distributed in the mainland, to see if there's no, you know, suspected source, are we going to see similar numbers? And yes, we did see some similar, a lot of similar numbers, and some numbers actually higher than yours.
I would, I don't want to have, like, the one side of this, this makes me feel a little bit better as far as like the health-wise, but I don't want this to take our attention away from trying to get Patrick cleaned up, though.
No.
I mean, it's still like a priority that we need to make sure that we're pushing for.
And it is important, I think one of the important takes from this, which I was actually sharing with Courtney, was that the lagoon waters, even though it's just barely about the 70 parts per trillion, it was surprising to me, not only that it was not only one location, it was pretty far, the locations are pretty far away from each other. So it's not one, well, there's a source mainland that is driving this, it would have to be a lot of sources in a lot of places. Lagoon is pretty big, and from, you know, the central, from Turkey Creek to Merritt Island, that's quite a long stretch.
When we started the idea of PFOS testing, it was well before a lot of the cancer concerns were coming out, and we designed those shallow wells with Virginia Barker, with the county, to basically determine how far it's coming off the base, and if we have to worry about it moving into the lagoon. And that was, so Satellite Beach decided to take that initiative. Unfortunately, we got, you know, raked through the coals, through the media and certain, you know, community groups for that, but you can see that that triggered countywide testing that shows that it's a much bigger problem, and that, you know, the lagoon really is a concern.
Right.
And that's really what we're looking at now, is, you know, we've moved on to, okay, how can we look at testing for, you know, fish consumption and things like that in the lagoon? Because that is the, you know, the number one concern right now with the county and the staff.
Right, so that bioaccumulation would be what you'd be concerned, this would, you know, stay, it's lipid, stays in the lipids, so you would expect fish, perhaps, you know...
And the side that there's like a whole bunch of chemicals sitting in the ground that don't belong there in nature, and so we should get them...
And the other thing to point out is that, you know, this is, there are new emergent contaminants, there's many others, but even here, we're looking at two, most people are looking to, I actually included some for that we have some new limits, provisional limits coming up, or other states have limits, but very few of these PFOS we can even test for, number one. Number two, the ones we can test for, we have nothing to compare against. So we're like, well, we have a number, so I don't know if that's good or bad. A lot of your numbers were non-detects throughout, so that is better than having a number and not knowing what to do with it. But yeah, I agree completely. I think there's still, that doesn't mean you should dismiss it all, it just means that at least irrigation waters that are in some of your sports parks, and they seemed, you know, everything seemed okay from the one-time sampling, and you had two-time sampling on groundwater wells, and the levels were similar.
And I think, yeah, and I think that's the two things I wanted to point out, too, is that the testing that we previously did with a completely different company, you know, there was, you know, I guess speculation that those were wrong, or they were, you know, underestimated, and then these confirmed that those tests were the same, pretty much, and this is done by a completely different company. And then the second thing was, you know, we were originally concerned about not only the spread into our stormwater systems and stuff like that for the lagoon, but also because we were concerned our residents were watering the lawns. Now, that seems to dissipate a little bit, you know, with these results, and we'll still, you know, as time moves on, make sure that we, you know, randomly and continually sample to make sure that stays the same. But I think, you know, that makes us feel a lot better about what our residents are using on their lawns. But it does bring the, you know, the biggest issue that we have, which is the impact to our lagoon, and making sure that we stay on top of that with the county. And, you know, the county has been a huge partner with us in this endeavor, and, you know, we can't thank them enough for helping us, you know, including a lot of their monitoring wells in what we've done. So I think it gives you a good picture of what's going on, not only on the beach side, but, you know, kind of countywide, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions from council at this time? Thank you. If we have more from public, something, we'll call you up. Thank you very much. Two parts here. One, Courtney, do you want us to accept this report?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
And then the second part is sending the letter to the residents.
Yes, we would.
I'll make a motion to accept the report from Applied Ecology.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion on that. Here and now, at this time, open up for public comment on the report. John.
John Ferguson, 135 label. I only have a suggestion, and that is that this data be published as a technical report in a reputable journal, and that we start doing that with these types of things, because there's a terrible dearth of information. And if enough folks start publishing stuff, you'll begin to see what things look like. We went from Satellite Beach, three wells, to the county. It'd be nice to do the state, and then the southeast, or whatever, just to see what's going on. And if nobody publishes, nobody reads it, nobody knows it. So my suggestion is to pause.
Thank you. Comments still open? Here are no further. Bring it back to council.
Can I speak? I didn't realize if you were going to call residents in the non...
I was just calling for the agenda. I'll give you your three minutes.
Thank you.
I just want to, again, Tiffany Johnson, yeah, Tiffany Johnson from Melbourne, Florida, to ask a couple of questions. And is this lab, is this company a certified laboratory, the state of Florida?
Yes.
They are? I can't find that information.
Yes.
Can you provide that information?
Yes.
Okay. Do you perform that on-site, or do you send them?
No, we send it to a...
Let me address us.
Oh, I'm sorry, she's just...
Thank you.
Responding. And then we know that PFOA and PFOS investigation in the science realm is very, very new. New Jersey took the initiative in the United States to set a very low standard of 27 parts per trillion, which they still know causes, you know, at risk. So although I think that it's great, and I acknowledge the effort is there, I still don't think this provides the kind of answers that the community is looking for. We know that this is not the first time that this issue has been brought to light, you know, '91, '92, people were talking about this. We are blessed with the gift of technology to be able to allow us to communicate in ways we were never able to do before, which has given people an opportunity to have a voice that doesn't easily go away. I think that there's been a lot of talk about the public coming forward, posting about things that are important to us, and we have a right to do that. You know, this is something that is affecting our loved ones, it is affecting our children, it has affected the ones before us, and will continue to affect the ones that go before after us if we don't start finding sustainable solutions. So you guys are, you know, the city's voice, the people of your city's voice, and all I'm saying is, a resident of Satellite Beach for 20 years, who has had numerous friends and families that have had friends that have been affected, that have died, that have left children behind, do your due diligence, guys. And that's all I'm saying. This is, this research has not been done, this isn't something that's been studied for 60 years. I appreciate the work and dedication, I think there were much more accredited laboratories that could have been used in the efforts, with a lot more, just kind of proven results, and I'm just really, I don't know, it just really makes me feel uneasy about the whole thing, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public comments still open? Here are no further. Bring it back to council. We're taking in right now their report. Okay, acceptance of the report. Any further discussion?
I just want to make one statement. I don't think in any way we're discounting that illness or cancers are existing in the community. What we have to work with is what the government standards are, right? So we've petitioned to the state and to the federal government, all of us at some level or another, to get some better standards out there. Because I agree with you, it's very across the board, we don't really know what we're dealing with, it's a very new chemical that's out there, so we are very much aware of that. The fact that it's at least all over the county does say something to us about where is it coming from, how do we ourselves, like, take our lives? No more of those little silicone bracelets, those have PFOS in them. Dental floss has PFOS in them. Microwave popcorn bags have it. So, you know, we have to take a little bit of time and responsibility with ourselves, too, but that doesn't mean that the PFOS is the issue with cancer, we don't know. You know, so, and I myself personally, and I've lived here for a long time, I'm not saying, and I know Courtney, I know everybody else feels the same way, this isn't something we're saying is going away just because we have a report. And I feel comfortable with this report because it is consistent with the one that we had before. So this is kind of saying there is a pattern. So what we do now is we petition the state, we petition the government, and we just keep moving forward and collecting it. That's all we can do, and just try to be healthy. So that's all else.
Courtney, also, and on this report, we have the data right now, right? We did our testing, we've done it twice on these wells. So we can, we have the data.
We dug, this is, thank you. So we knew, we had a feeling, when we saw the DOD report, that we were going to have a PFOS and PFOA problem, which is why we dug shallow wells, so we can continue to monitor them.
That was my...
Ongoing, in the future, and we partnered with Brevard County on locating them, on, you know, using their wells as well, their shallow monitoring wells, for that express purpose. We added the volatiles and the PFCs and all that to this testing round to address the concerns of the community, and we included things that, quite frankly, we knew were not going to show up in our groundwater, but we put them in there anyway to make sure that the community had those answers. So that type of testing, I am not recommending to continue. The PFOS and PFOA testing, on the other hand, we're recommending to continue to monitor because we know that's a known problem that we need to keep an eye on for the lagoon, for our stormwater systems, and for other, you know, obvious reasons.
I think that's what my point was going to be, is the wells we have there, for those, whether it's every couple of years, you might be able to detect, does it move?
Right. So those are, that's a monitoring, and we actually started talking with Dr. Listipad about, you know, possibly doing a GIS, you know, in being able to map these results so we can see that pattern across the county, stuff like that. But I did want to say that, you know, we, when we talk about the comments on social media and otherwise, we have no problem with people expressing their opinions, that's great, you know, we love that. What we do have a problem with is people creating, you know, things that we did not say and making things out to be what they aren't, by splicing videos and things like that, and that's what I was referring to, because clearly, these results show that what we were talking about prior, was there was nothing wrong with what we were saying, and, you know, and I wanted to point that out, that everything that we said before is panning out here, and the city had, we did nothing that was, that was ever wrong. And, you know, I want to make sure that people understand that, that we have always had the best interest of the community in mind, we've done what we could do to satisfy their concerns, and PFOS and PFOA has always been our concern, and we'll continue to investigate that as time goes on.
Thank you.
I just want, you know, Satellite Beach and Patrick Air Force Base is not the only military installation in Florida. You have Mayport Naval Station, you have Orange Park where the Naval Air Station was, there's McDill in Tampa, there's Tyndall, there's Elgin. I would imagine if this type of research was being done in those areas, we'd probably find very similar numbers.
Absolutely.
So when we go, and when you talk about going to the state and going to the federal government, I think it needs to be a concerted effort in Florida to figure out what's going on at all of these places, because we are not unique here with this situation. These things were being used all across the state of Florida, and probably all across the United States.
Any further? Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, thank you. Second part of this is to send a letter to our residents summarizing the test results. Estimated cost, around $2,000, Courtney.
We just wanted to send a direct letter to each of the residents that would be, you know, that would go to each resident, so that it's outlined clearly to everyone what the status of this testing results are.
Is this the exact letter you intend on sending, or do you plan on maybe working on it, or is this it?
Well, we were going to put it in letter format, and, you know, add some conclusion language, but this is the meat of it.
And let them know that this is all available, if they want to come in and see it.
And the results are already on our website. I did post to Facebook page that have interested people. Now that you've accepted these results, I'm going to go ahead and put it on the, we're videotaping this, the presentation of Dr. Listipad, and we'll put that on the city's page when we get that done.
Mark?
Just, you know, Courtney and I have talked about this a long time ago, and it's kind of what we've talked about. I think the fact that Dr. Listipad validated the original results, or that's wonderful, thank you, nice report, we appreciate it. I, I think that your last sentence in this thing is, if residents would like a review, a full report, please visit. I really and truly don't see a need for us to spend two grand to put this letter out in there. I think everything is there. I think they could call the city if they had questions or concerns, and talk into somebody from the city and say, going on, read the letter online, or look at the report, is sufficient. I just don't think, I think we've done due diligence on this, over and over, I think Courtney's gone a long ways, or council has, I just don't see that we need to send this letter out. I just, I think it's kind of, it speaks, the whole thing that we've done speaks for itself, so. I just can't support the letter.
I think the, the reason why staff would like to do this is, for example, if you looked at the Florida Today article about our designation as the safest city, there's people, most of them don't live in Satellite Beach, but people, you know, take care of your water issues, you might want to address all those water issues. So part of this is for the people who don't pay attention to Facebook and pay attention to the articles in the newspaper, which I don't see the media picking this up. I know George Will with Melbourne Beach Sider, but, you know, they like to report the problems, they don't really like to report the results, so I would...
So you think that this will make a better reach to people who just don't follow that stuff? Okay, well, I can buy that, then. I'll, I'll, I'll take that back, I will support it, yeah. I, I like the letter. I like to get the information out there, there's nothing to be hidden from it. Put the information out to our residents, it's there, we continue that communication with them. And whoever wants to, it's like anything else, whoever wants to believe it's going to believe it, and whoever doesn't want to believe it, not going to believe it. I think we did our due diligence in that, we did the testing of this, and what I like is our ability to go back and retest these other wells for POS and stuff, is it a year, an hour or two, and see if they've changed any.
Right.
And I think that's good information that we can gather, not that we're ever going to stop here, but... I agree. We can get, you know, more data as we go along. I'll make a motion to send a letter to the residents summarizing the groundwater testing results from Applied Ecology and direct them to the city website for a full report.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Gibson.
Just follows in everything that we've talked with Courtney about, about being transparent, about making sure that we counter anything that's out there that's not exactly 100%. And this letter really is what we've always talked to her about doing, so.
I agree.
I would say a mailer is the only way we know for sure that the information is getting to them. Not everybody's on Facebook, not everybody's on social media. We know we're giving this information to them, and they can choose to do with it as they will.
I'm going to, because we're voting on this item, I'm going to open up the floor for it, and I will only take it on us sending the letter. So the podium's open. Here are no speakers. Bring it back to council. Any further discussion? Grace?
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. Staff, thank you very much for your work on the report, and we'll keep marching forward on it. Thank you. City manager's report, okay, we'll go back to, if everybody agrees, we're on agenda item eight now. Discuss, take action on agreement between the city of Satellite Beach and the medical director. Steve?
I'm just asking that we renew the...
I'm just asking that we renew the contract that we have now with Dr. John McPherson as the medical director for the body department, his service in the past, and we just want to continue on. You'll see, there is one issue that needs to be addressed, and that is, it was omitted in the line of the term, paragraph two, where it talks about commencing February 1st, 2019, ending the year document, it says September 2019, but it's just supposed to go to the end of the budget here, it was an accident that was omitted, and if we can just go ahead and get it approved, we'll make sure that this gets happened.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Satellite Beach and the medical director, John McPherson, with the changes in the agreement.
Motion by Councilwoman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Discussion from council.
Question. Is, is John McPherson still practicing EMS?
Yes.
He's still working in EMS? Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? This time open up for public comment on agenda item eight. There are no further comment, back to council. Grace.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes. Thanks. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item nine, discuss, take action on Dell financing services for leasing computers.
Good evening. So in front of you, it's just, what we've decided is, the problem is, is Microsoft will not be supporting Windows 7 beginning in January 2020. So what the plan was originally was we put in the budget for next year to spend $75,000 to replace all the computers. Adam has done his due diligence and has gone out to Dell financing and said, what is a better deal that we can do this at? So what we're looking at and proposing to you is to kind of do this in three different stages, go ahead and lease 24 of them currently, we'll get into the midsummer, lease the other 24, and then as we get into the next fiscal year, we will lease the rest of them. So the cost of the ones in front of you currently are $447.71 a month for 60 months. Understand that the quote that has the extended price of $22,486.72, that would be if we were actually just to buy them outright currently. So yes, there is some additional monies that has to be spent if we decide to lease it out. The good news is, is that means we lease them over the five years, we have a warranty for five years on these computers. So that's the good side of it, as we all know, computers last three or four years, and they're no longer good. So to have that warranty for five years, we'll be able to keep the computers up and running longer. And this will also get everybody in the city on new computers or upgraded computers, as well as get us on the same software and stuff, too, which has also been kind of a challenge.
Thank you. Question, my, I did the calculation, so there's 24 of them now.
Correct.
Correct statement? And then there'll be an additional 24?
Correct.
And then an additional 16?
Correct, for a total of 64 computers.
Right. Now, so, rough figuring, okay? I just kind of rounded things off to 27,000, two of them, and then $18,000 for the 16 computers. So I got a total of around $72,000?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, and.
On the same page.
Great, I think it's good. So if a computer goes down, right, it's their responsibility to fix it? And if it's broke, another one comes in its place?
I can speak from experience, because I used to work in this field, I worked as a help desk manager, we managed all of the equipment. Last one was at Mercedes, so we had about 2,000 PCs, and I literally, I don't know what we're signing up for, we had the gold one, but I had a woman run over her laptop with her car, and they replaced the entire laptop, under the warranty that we had. And they have people come in, do they still do it that way, where they'll come in and fix it, or are you Dell certified? Because I was getting Dell certified. Okay, so, and so typically, like, if it's a part, they'll actually have somebody come over and fix the computer, too. So it takes a little bit of a burden off you, because you're a one-man show, and I know it's not easy. I mean, this is, I've been, I've always been very happy with Dell, so.
Great.
It's good thing.
Thank you. Mark.
Just a question, I was looking, looking at one on page one of five, the quote, it says, "No antivirus software," is that an issue?
No.
Second question is, what kind of office software is provided, Adam? Is it just, I mean, is it, are we going to buy software on top of this to run these things, or?
No, for Dell, we're only buying the hardware. We'll be getting the software from Microsoft Office.
Okay.
These agents.
Okay.
Amazon, it's the cheapest price.
Okay. Last question, and Mindy kind of hit on it, but I, let's say Alan wakes up one morning at his desk, and he pours coffee accidentally on top of his computer.
Making a difference in the computer I have now.
But, an accident-type thing, you know, is, is, how does that computer get replaced?
Well, the computer, the PCs, will not have the complete care warranty, they'll have a hardware warranty, so if something fails in the computer, they'll.
Okay.
If somebody spills something on something, then we'll be waiting for software, for the PCs.
Okay.
But laptops, because they're used out in the field by the fire department, police department, and people taking them home, we are getting complete care warranty for the.
Complete care, okay, all right.
So any drop, spill, electrical surges, anything that happens to, other than if somebody purposely destroyed their laptop, it would be covered under the warranty.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Great. Any other question? Okay, at this time, open up for public comment on agenda item nine. Hearing public comment, bring it back to council, a motion.
Make a motion to approve the lease of 24 computers from Dell Financial Services in the amount of $447.71 a month for 60 months.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. One other question, Courtney, or Brittany related to this? Are we going to have to come back when you're going to do the next 24, and then the next 16?
I think so.
If you're okay with this, as we've explained it, and we're staying under the $75,000 that we originally budgeted for, then that's, I mean, we can if we want to.
Then my motion to include the next 24 and the next 16.
I'll amend mine as well.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we got it done tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
Good thinking.
Any further discussion? Grace.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes. Brittany, thank you very much.
Ten.
Ten. Discuss, take action on extension of Mead and Hunt continuing service contract. Alan.
Good evening.
Is that someone? Hello, can you hear me? Test this? Okay.
Maybe it's my ears.
Got a little cold.
The existing service, continuing service contract for Mead and Hunt, or what used to be Quentin Hampton, is going to expire in March 20th of this year. In the current contract, it allows for extensions, annual extensions of that contract, and I'm recommending that we utilize or take advantage of that opportunity and extend the contract due to the fact that we have a great relationship with Mead and Hunt. They've done outstanding work for us since the beginning, and even before, when they did our original stormwater master plan, we had another engineering firm on a continuing service contract, they did it as an outside firm, they did a great job with that, and they just updated our master plan and did another outstanding job with that. And I was kind of taken aback, too, by, because I've worked with David since the beginning, and all the work that they've done, you see their cover letter and all the projects that we've done together, it's kind of astounding, in 13 years, what we've accomplished. So if not for their expertise and diligence, I don't know if we would have accomplished it in the same way. We saved money, I wouldn't say a lot of money, but it was substantial. And everything was done on time, and we worked very well with the contractors, and the residents were, were very happy when things were done. We just recently completed the DeSoto Stormwater Park, and I haven't heard a complaint yet, except for black bugs. But that's kind of an inside joke.
Was there a recliner out there?
No, there was a swarm of black bugs that went through the city, and they, actually, I had them at my house. And I live up in the unincorporated area. A lady called in and said, "That stormwater park is bringing black bugs." Well, let me tell you, it was, and it was really good, because it brought up to my house, too, up in the, and they disappeared the next day, so. So anyway, that was our little inside joke. But outside of that little issue, the park looks great. We're about to go out to bid for some stormwater projects in, around the Elm, Temple, DeSoto area, and we're looking forward to working well with them again on that. So it's my recommendation that, again, we extend the contract. If it was up to me, it would be more than for one year, but we can only do it for one year, so that is my recommendation. And David King is here from Mead and Hunt, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Durham motion?
I'll make a motion to, first of all, David, thank you so much for all that you guys have done for our city, because, you know, I've been around, Mark and Frank have been around, and dealing with your company, and you guys do great work, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the extension of Mead and Hunt through March 20th of 2020.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion from, Mark.
It's hard to believe it's been 13 years. My gosh, she hasn't aged a bit. But no, it's been great. Yeah, I just, I had no idea until I read this a couple days ago, that it was 13 years, it was amazing.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah.
Further discussion? This time open up for public comment on agenda item 10.
I'm hungry, too, but I don't need the shirt. I stood on the redevelopment board, and David has also supported us there, and an incredible job, he always handled himself well in public, very professional, things were on time, things came through, he was really there when we needed him, and he participated and really helped us out, so I was impressed. So I think he does a good job, and thank you.
Thank you. Further public? There are no further. Bring it back to council. Any further, council? Grace.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 12, which is our city council workshop meeting first, and then our council meeting at 7:00. I've got one question here, are we doing a CRA meeting before this one? Grace? We are, okay. And the only reason I was asking that was, depending on how many applicants we had, there's probably no need to start at 6:30. If we don't have the CRA.
We do, because we have an annual report going to you.
Okay, all right.
Do we have something tomorrow night?
There is. Okay, great, thank you very much. Oh, I got a question on one of those applicants. Is it our ex-councilman?
Yes.
Generally, in the past, we do interviews because we don't know the individuals. Do we want to interview Steve?
Oh, definitely.
Yes, I think we should.
Set aside an hour, Frank.
He's going to earn his spot.
Okay.
All those, all that verbal abuse, Steve, is probably going to come back to haunt you. All he'll do is go, huh?
I was trying to help.
He didn't have to campaign, right? Like, he just walked onto his seat, he was going to get in a hard time on something.
Again, take a look at the council agenda items, if there's something that you would like added, or whatever, please, Courtney.
Do we have something tomorrow night? Is there?
You have two items, well, we have the sustainability update workshop is going to be going on, Nick will be handling that.
Okay.